Good afternoon and welcome to the February 2021 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. All trustees are present here in the room along with President Andy Bound. The rest of our audience is available by Zoom in compliance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Please help me start our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a quorum today. We have a, I don't know if it's a routine agenda or not because of all the benefits that we have to approve once a year, which are important to our entire employee group. And then we have a 60-minute executive session scheduled at the end of the meeting. So with that, we have no awards and recognitions tonight. We have no one signed up for the open forum. The open forum period is a period at each regularly scheduled board meeting where members of the public can address the board from the podium for about comments regarding the college. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. If there are multiple speakers, the chair has the prerogative to limit it to three minutes each. So those are, because we're virtual, those are required to be registered by 5:00 p.m. on the day before the meeting. So yesterday at 5:00, it will be the same for our March meeting. If you go to our website, jccc.edu, and you wish to speak, you can register at that time. That moves us on directly to the board reports, and the first one is from our Student Senate President, Sailor Eischer. Sailor, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you. Thanks so much.
Welcome.
Good start of the semester, really good start of the semester. The 2021, from 2020 to 2021, executive board elections are happening. In late March, we finalized those dates, and we've appointed an election commissioner. Senator Andrew Snow was appointed, and the Student Senate is now continuing to collaborate with the Center for Student Involvement on our virtual comments base, the Discord server, where the CSI hosts all kinds of different contests, and we host that Among Us study night. If you have students in your life, feel free to tell them about the Among Us nights. It's a fun way to make new friends. The student clubs and organization highlights from this month are that the Model United Nations is beginning their spring conference this week. This season was a little different than the others, but I've heard from the people I know in Model United Nations that it's a great, it's a great conference, and some of it's been on campus, some of the ones in the past. Then also, the JCCC Quiz Bowl qualified and will compete in our national competition just this next week. The Black Student Union is celebrating Black History Month by hosting Kansas City Poet Laureate Glenn North on Wednesday, February 24th at 1:00 p.m. via Zoom. I'm sure that's on Get Involved if any of you would like to attend. The Student Senate also has welcomed three new senators this, in the last two weeks. Senators Hasta Tapia, Juliana Valentine-Molas, and Shelby Winter. And that concludes my report. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Sailor. With respect to the Black History Month poet, will that be recorded in any way available to those of us who might not be available at 1:00? Do you know?
I don't know 100%. No, but I can talk about it. I'll definitely push for that.
I'm always anxious for that because we do have a lot of great programs in the middle of the day, and some people just can't break away from that. So I'd love for you to work with Dr. Weber or somebody to see if we could get that recorded so that we could all, we could all see it. And I'm proud of you for continuing to have a senator named Snow after the last week or so. So Senator Snow is in charge of elections. I'm sure he's, he will be busy between now and March. Other questions? Or smart aleck comments?
Yeah, mine's halfway between the two. Can you repeat, what did you say the Among Us was? It's part of...
Oh, yeah. So on the Get Involved website, there's an event next Saturday at 7:00, and if you click on that, there's a link to Discord, which is kind of like Zoom but less formal. And people on there just talk through voice chat. And when I was on Discord, I'm not going to get too far into it, but people chat, and they play this game called Among Us on there, and it's a great way for communities to grow. And so I thought I'd bring it to JCCC.
Love it. Fun. It's a very addictive game. I will say K-12 students love it. Thank you.
I don't see any more questions today, Sailor. Thank you. Stay safe and warm.
Thank you.
Our next report is from our college lobbyist, Dick Carter, who's been in Topeka following the goings on there. Mr. Carter.
It's been interesting, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to get right into it and go over the notes that I have from some actions that have occurred in the past day or two. I know you've got my printed report, and I'm going to touch on a couple of items in there, but if there's more specific questions after I'm done making a few comments, I'd be happy to answer those. Let me talk a little bit about the budgeting process and where we're at with regard to the budget for higher education. Both the Senate and House Budget Committees have heard the higher education budget. Both of the respective either subcommittee in the Senate or the committee in the House have reported their budgets out to the full committees. The Senate took the governor's recommendations and defers to Omnibus the amounts that would make our budget whole. So those are the amounts that we're talking about that were cut in the current year as well as in FY '22. So we'll have that discussion in the Senate a little bit later on. Actually, we'll have that conversation in Conference Committee, and I would imagine we're going to end up with the House position. We'll see where things end up going. The House has really shown some leadership over the past few weeks, few months, as far as the session is going. And sometimes we depend on the Senate to sort of correct actions. Right now, we're working really closely in the House to make sure that things move forward the way we'd like to see them move forward. The House budget includes the $2.1 million in the current year for the Senate Bill 155 money. Keep in mind, those are courses that have already been delivered and money that is owed to the, to the community colleges. And then the House also includes the $8.3 million for FY '22. Now, they call them enhancements. That's kind of a misnomer. They are just making the budget whole. The House also included an important provision, or a proviso, as we call it, which has the weight of law for one year, that would prevent the Board of Regents from transferring any tiered, non-tiered, and Senate Bill 155 budget line items. The reason that's interesting, and the House has included that proviso in their budget report, just last night at about 6:00 p.m., the Board of Regents did this very thing where they took about $10.3 million that would normally go to the state universities for some different programs and have put it into a fund for deferred maintenance, and then approved a proposal at the board table to clawback $5 million from each state university and put it into a deferred maintenance fund. So the fact that we've included this proviso that would prevent the Board of Regents from transferring any monies on those line items is fairly significant. Now, there was a little bit of a fracas yesterday. During the Full Appropriations Committee, an amendment was offered by Representative Tarwater that I'm sure you've read about in some local newspapers. And I want to talk a little bit about what that looks like and what it means. The amendment would refund tuition at 50% for online courses and refund tuition for 100% for the prorated days that were not fulfilled within a semester. There was significant discussion that ensued. It really, it really caught the presenter off guard. She's a freshman committee chair, and this was not expected. The, and it was a discussion, a discussion that kind of went off the rails. So some of the comments that I'm going to tell you are not typical of what a budget committee discussion might look like. Here were some of the comments. What would the fiscal note of such action be? So how much would this cost? Why wasn't CARES, why were not CARES Act money used for students in this fashion? What are the online remote percentages versus in-person classes at institutions? COVID has caused major changes. Here's a good one. Teaching students online is cheaper. Due to CARES Act money, higher education has saved money and even made money. A reference was made to House Bill 2142, and I talked about this last month. It didn't have a bill number last month, but it does now, and I'll briefly discuss that later. Ultimately, Representative Troy Waymaster, who's the Chair of House Appropriations, indicated that the Board of Regents would be invited to address all of these issues following the turnaround session, which is March 5th, or the first part of March. And so the Board of Regents is going to be asked to come in and address some of the issues related to online courses at state universities and courses that were not delivered in a daily manner throughout the course of a semester. The amendment passed 14 to 6. That was a little bit of a surprise. And quite frankly, I don't believe that this amendment stays in the budget bill as it makes its way through the Conference Committee process. It might not even make its way out of committee. We'll see. It's incredibly important to note that community colleges and technical colleges are not a part of the amendment language. The amendment only applies to state universities. However, they're partners in education with us, and so that's, that's just something we're going to have to continue to watch. I've spent quite a bit of time defending the fact that community colleges are not included in the language to a number of legislators, just getting them up to date on the action that occurred. Even though we're all in the State House, it's still a weird environment, and people, people don't see each other. They don't get all of the information like we normally do when the legislature is in session under normal circumstances. I won't even pledge to say that it's normal even then. Let me move on and talk about a few other things. I have a feeling there's going to be some conversation about what I just presented on, but let me, let me catch you up to date on a few other items and then see where you'd like to go with, with our dialogue. The college promise legislation has been moving its way through the process. It's still in committee in both the House and the Senate. The Senate version of the bill has been amended to provide what some would term as guardrails. In this case, we're talking about things like adding a, an income level, a family income level for those that might be eligible to apply for the program, capping the program at $6 million, subject to appropriation. Again, this hasn't even been considered part of the appropriation and would be dealt with in the Omnibus session, if anything. The, and that bill is likely to be worked tomorrow. They've been amending the bill. The committee wanted to see a clean version of the bill. That bill will likely be worked tomorrow in the Senate Education Committee. The House bill, it's House Bill 2287, had the hearing on Wednesday. The, the House version's a little bit different. It mirrors the same bill that came out of the House last year. It includes 10 discipline fields. The Senate version, I think, has four or five, and it caps the program at $10 million. Both have a provision to work in the, in the state, and we provided testimony in support of both of the measures in a general format of we support the concept of college promise. Last year, the bills passed the Senate 37 to 2, and the House 110 to 3. I would say that there is some challenges ahead. There are some new legislators in place, some that I would think might be on the team that are, that are pushing back on this particular legislation. I do think that both bills will make it out of committee and be debated on the House and Senate floor respectively, and they'll end up in a Conference Committee report that at some point will make its way to the governor. That is still an unknown, whether or not she will sign the, the legislation. Some of the amendments might make it a little bit more appetizing, but early on, she indicated that she was not in favor of the legislation simply due to the funding stream issues that might be connected to it. Let's step back a minute. I referenced a bill, House Bill 2142, a little bit earlier when I was talking about the Budget Committee process. You'll recall that this is a bill that will provide a property tax refund to businesses closed by government orders, whether they're local governments, county governments, or state governments. They would be reimbursed a prorated amount for the time in which they are closed. The bill had a hearing in the House Tax Committee, but no action has been taken. There is said to be a more onerous version of that bill in the works. That bill would provide similar reparations for income tax, regulatory fees for doing business, things like that. We've not seen that bill introduced yet. We've just heard about it. So we have to kind of just always keep, keep our eyes and ears open for things like that. I would say that while there is an appetite for the conversation around those issues, I don't necessarily see them moving forward. We'll, we'll continue to monitor things. The fact that that bill had a hearing and hasn't had much, much action yet is, I think, one indication of where we might be heading or not heading with that issue. But I bring it up because the bill was referenced in the conversation when they were talking about tuition reimbursement. That's a critical viewpoint of several in the legislative process. Couple of other bills to talk about, and then I'll be quiet and see what kind of questions you might have, Mr. Chair. House Bill 2264 just had a hearing. In fact, I think the committee is done at this point. They were racing through, but it would permit the compensation of student athletes at the post-secondary level for the use of their name, image, likeness, et cetera. As the bill is written, community colleges would fall under the purview of the bill. I don't, I don't know if that poses an issue for any of our athletes on campus, but it certainly is something that we're watching and will continue to, to monitor. The final issue then is a bill that I think some were asking about before the legislative session even started, and so I just wanted to provide a brief snapshot of the bill related to immunity for liability for any business that accepts a work-based learning program. 2351 is the bill number, and it will be heard next week in the House Commerce, Labor, and Economic Development Committee. The bill was talked about last year, or at least the topic was, and at the time, we were able to review some of the draft language and made the determination that any of the, the work-based learning type programs or instances where there might be somebody in a, a class but also working as part of the class, we were covered under that, under those liability issues. This bill only applies to secondary institutions, so kids that are in high school. But I'm going to continue to watch the bill just to see what, what happens with that. That bill has a hearing next week in the House Commerce, Economic, and Development Committee. So let me stop there, Mr. Chair. I know I kind of went fast and furious and talked a lot, but I'm sure there's some questions or, or folks might want to talk about some issues.
Trustee Snyder.
Dick, great, great report. Lot, lot going on for sure. Last year, House leadership listed the college promise program as one of their top four or five priorities. Is there something similar like that this year? I don't know that I've seen a list like that out of House leadership, but I may have missed it.
You're correct about their, they had several bills that kind of fit a number of areas last year that was sort of their top priority plan. I think that the early focus on making a safe space for the legislature to meet, maybe put some of that behind. I would just say that this still is a bill that is supported by House leadership. I know that the Kansas Chamber certainly supports the House version of that, that bill. They were kind of in, in sync with some of the House leadership issues last year, but I've not seen sort of a package, if you will, that would be billed as such. So the House bill that was heard on Wednesday is the version that, that was introduced last year, but I don't think it's part of a larger, a larger package from, from House leadership, if you will.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Carter, is there a fiscal note on Senate Bill 43, which is the college promise, without really any limitations except that you fill out a FAFSA?
There is, and the fiscal note that is provided by, so how that process works, the, the bill's introduced, it goes to the governor's budget office or the, or the budget office. The budget director then requests from the appropriate agency any financial impacts they might foresee as a, as a result of the bill or the language included in the bill. That fiscal note was exactly the same as the one from last year, and when we started digging into it, it was far more significant than what we truly anticipate the bill would be. I believe the initial Senate bill was in the 25-plus million range and, and used numbers that would be inclusive of people in all programs, not just specific programs outlined by the bill. I met with the budget director, and we sat down with the Senate Chair to kind of go over some of those issues along with the help of Heather Morgan so that we could maybe get that fiscal note in a more realistic manner. I don't know that it's been updated. I think additional conversations that have, that have flowed, which are anecdotal since they're not in print, would indicate that in a full, in a full implementation, we might be looking at something close to, to $7 million. So I think that's why you see the cap in the Senate at 6. The House still has a cap at $10 million.
Thank you. Trustee Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have more questions about the HB 2142 that you talked about, the clawbacks for the retroactive. It looks like the Kansas City Star is quoting different, where they are saying it impacts all colleges, technical, but also that it has even provided quotes from three elected Republicans and two Democrats. They all reference this bill, so I'm just curious, does the Star have something that needs to be more updated? Can you provide some more information? Because you said that the colleges are exempt from that, so I just wanted to understand.
No. House Bill 2142 deals with property tax reimbursement, and, and it would be if a business was forced to be closed, their, their property tax, whatever the application process, there's a lot of unknowns about how the mechanics of the bill would work. They could, they could apply for some type of reimbursement or rebate for property taxes paid during the time that they were closed. How that might impact the college would be if we had to, in a tax year, provide any reimbursement for taxes collected. So I suppose that would have to be similar to a Board of Tax Appeals process, but it doesn't specifically apply to, it does not apply to tuition or students.
I thought you were speaking, I think the trustee was speaking to the bill that would...
The amendment to the Tarwater amendment.
Mr. Representative Tarwater.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I heard 2142. That, so that has nothing to do with the Tarwater amendment. You're right. Newspapers sometimes get it wrong. And, and I'd be happy to turn it over to Dr. Bound if he'd like to add anything to this, but, but we are not included in, in the amendment or the intent of the amendment.
Just for clarification, I received a call this morning from Representative Tarwater explaining to me specifically that community colleges were not included in the amendment that he made, and that what we're seeing in the media isn't aligned to what was stated in the amendment.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay.
Anything else? Trustee Cook, and then Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as a follow-up to Trustee Lawson's question. Is the impact then at the four-year schools going to be borne by the universities, or will state funding be, come forward to reimburse that tuition?
Yeah.
Is that a question for me?
I assume that's coming out of the university's budget is what the plan is.
Yeah, I, I assume so too. I, again, don't think that in the final analysis that this amendment bears the weight of law. I don't think we'll see anything like it. I think we'll have a conversation when the legislators return from the first turnaround period at some point, and specifically, this is, this is occurring in the House Appropriations Committee. So the Chair, Troy Waymaster, already indicated that he would be getting with the Board of Regents' leadership to have them over to, to discuss these issues. And how it would be paid back is, is a good question. I'm not sure what that, what that process would look like, because the amendment itself doesn't contain any of the mechanics of what that would look like for the state universities.
Thank you.
Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the difference in the college promise bills is essentially the Senate's uncapped right now? Just make sure I'm following, and then the House wants to cap it at $10 million?
So through an amendment, the Senate bill is capped at $6 million, and the House version is capped at $10 million.
Thank you.
Dick, there are also differences in the number of programs that may be eligible as well, right? That four or five versus 10 in the House?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, I think that's all, Mr. Carter. I just want to speak to the refunding. I think we need to be very careful, whether it's K-12 or community colleges or our four-year universities, if it is an accredited class for which a student receives credit, and the legislature decides that it is not worth what they paid for it and can demand a refund for that, that seems to me a very dangerous precedent, because it could apply to any level of education. It could apply to individual teachers or professors. And, you know, if it's still accredited by the accrediting organization, and they can still get college three hours of credit, or three hours of high school, or three hours of community college credit toward a degree, I think it's dangerous to let the legislature decide of what value it is and to force the cost back on the institution. So I know you'll keep an eye on that, Dick, but it's, the fact that we're not in it, we, we're not that selfish, I don't think, when it comes to supporting higher education or public education. So at least I'm not. I don't want to speak for everybody, and I don't think anybody here, based on knowing them, would disagree with that. So thank you for your report and for the work.
Thank you, sir.
Our next report is from Diane Davis, a professor of English who is the Vice President of the Faculty Association, anxiously awaiting her chance to show up Professor Liker. Right, Diane?
Absolutely. That's why I'm here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Davis. I'm a professor in the English department. I'm also the Associate Chair of the English Department, and I'm currently serving as the Vice President of the Faculty Association. Dr. Liker has asked me to address you this evening and provide the Faculty Association report. So first, I want to say I appreciate this opportunity to address you directly and to be a representative of the Faculty Association. As a full-time faculty member and an FA member for nearly 15 years, I, like all of us, have never experienced the overwhelming stresses this pandemic has placed on our students and our faculty and our staff. While an experienced online teacher, I still felt the incredible responsibility of transitioning face-to-face students to an online environment last March, nearly a year ago. And like my colleagues, I continue to do my best to deliver online instruction that engages students who would prefer and perhaps thrive in a face-to-face environment. As faculty, we're united in our dedication to provide a rich learning opportunity for our students virtually and face-to-face. Recently, our colleagues expressed concern about proposed changes in our testing center policies. Our colleagues voiced passionately that the data supports their assertions that proctored tests are vital to maintaining the integrity of the course content. That integrity is crucial to maintaining our reputation for providing excellence in education. We are encouraged that these policies are being revisited in a spirit of shared governance. The creation of a hybrid task force and support for at least two proctored exams is welcome with them. We appreciate the work that the ABC has done to organize this discussion and to create this task force. As the negotiations update, our teams and FA leadership are listening to our faculty and what their priorities are as we work to support our students. The negotiation team will be holding a town meeting with the bargaining unit on February the 26th to narrow down priority issues. As a member of our English department, I want to take this opportunity to mention a few exciting things that are happening in English. First, the Chair of our department and the incredible scholar, Dr. Andrew Roomfield, gave a fascinating lecture on February the 3rd of the College Scholar Series, was entitled "The Great Divide: How Restaurants Tell the Story of Kansas-Missouri Border." If you didn't have an opportunity to watch this live, I encourage you to see the presentation. Also, our department's annual Cavalier Conference on Writing and Literature will be held virtually on April 9th, or April 16th. The title of this conference is Virtually Divided: Writing On and In the Margins. We're so excited to welcome Sarah Smarsh, journalist and author of Heartland, a memoir of working hard and being broke in the richest country on earth. And she comes by a natural, Dolly Parton and the women who lived yourselves, as our keynote speaker. Sarah Smarsh's Heartland is also our Common Read. Our Common Read Committee takes nominations for engaging in important works appropriate to use in English classes and classes across campus, and the department selects a book for use. Last year, we voted to offer Smarsh's Heartland as a Common Read choice, and the opportunity for faculty and students to get to hear her speak at our conference is one we're particularly proud of this year. The final update I'd like to provide you is that at our last Faculty Association meeting held on February 11th, Dr. Bound was our guest. We'd like to thank Dr. Bound. We'd like to thank Dr. Bound for not just attending, but spending time to answer faculty concerns about safely returning to campus. Dr. Bound stressed that the college is not mandating a specific ratio of face-to-face online classes this fall, and the conversation is happening in departments and at the divisional levels. Many of our faculty expressed that they want to be in the classrooms and with their students, but they're concerned about the pace of immunizations in this area and that higher ed is not categorized right now as a priority for vaccinations. While virtual classes are not ideal, in some cases, the safety of our students and our faculty should be at the forefront of all decisions concerning returning to campus. I wanted in my remarks today with a special thank you to our colleagues who are already on campus and who have been for months working at the risk of their own health so that our students who need a face-to-face presence are supported and engaged. While teaching in a pandemic is a struggle for all, the Faculty Association acknowledges and particularly supports and thanks our colleagues who continue to work under these most stressful of circumstances. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Professor Davis? Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Diane, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
I appreciate, I think I understood your comments to be positive on the testing center issue that progress is being made. That topic has come forward for several months now, and I'm pleased that we're making some progress. I'm a little bit influenced by this Lenten season when, in the Book of Mark, the word immediately is mentioned several times. And I'm hopeful that immediately, we can continue to make progress on this issue because it's been there for too long, in my opinion, but I know there are a lot of issues that I don't understand. But thank you for that report, and I'm glad we're making progress.
Thank you.
With respect to the testing center, I agree with you and heard you talk about how proctored exams are vital to the student's learning process. And as I understood the testing issue, it was never that we were going to allow unproctored exams. The question is whether our testing center will host those versus requiring to be had during the class period. Did I understand, did I misunderstand that?
No, I think that's a correct understanding. And I'm going to speak not as an English faculty member, someone who would have to use the testing center for those purposes, but my understanding, listening to my colleagues in science, in math, accounting, and others, is that the concern has been that without some kind of resource, the testing center being that first resource, for those students to be able to come and take a test, that's proctor, that is, somebody is there making sure that student's actually taking that test, without that option, faculty are left trying to work through how to accommodate student schedules. For example, if you open that timeout between, say, 8:00 and noon, two or three days a week, a student could come in and take that test and that faculty member would be there, you would be leaving out students who work perhaps or have childcare issues from 8:00 to 12:00. And that student perhaps needs to come at a later time or needs to come on a Saturday or needs to come in some sort of accordance with their schedule. And so the burden has been really the concern for the student. How do we offer opportunity for that student to have a proctored exam experience in a way that accommodates a student's schedule?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Cross?
I just had a question. Has there been any issue with respect to supplemental payments or delay of supplemental payment, payments, Madam Vice President?
In turn, I'm sorry, I would need that question repeated?
Yes, supplemental payments, have they been on time?
Oh, you're asking about overload payments. So I believe that that varies from department to department and division to division. And so while I believe that some of them have been processed in a timely way, my understanding is that some have been not processed in a timely way. And so it was a concern that was brought to us and something that we are keeping an eye out on because obviously that money is important for our faculty.
I appreciate that. I'm sorry for the confusion, but being artful and tactful is difficult sometimes, so I'm trying to raise issues in a tactful way.
Thank you for repeating the question.
Okay.
All right. I think that's all. Professor Davis, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We won't take a vote on whether we'd rather have you or Jim, but you're welcome any time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item is our Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We meet quarterly at J-Cert. We haven't met since October. We'll meet again in April, scheduled to be at K-State Olathe. And I can report that we had a distribution this past month, ending in January, that was about 1.641 million, up 3.9% from January of 2020. Further, after distributions were slightly down in May through July 2020, distributions to J-Cert have actually been up every month since August of 2020, with the total revenue in 2020 up from 2019 and frankly, from any previous year. So we had, actually, I had it pulled up and I wanted to talk about it because I want to hear myself talk tonight. We had about 18.641 million in total distributions in 2020 compared to 18.364. And as an amateur economist, I find that as a useful indicator to say that we maintain some spending and/or revenue in Johnson County that hopefully signals that also Scripture says that this too shall pass. So, Mr. Chair, you can read more about the Johnson County Education Research Triangle at jocotriangle.com, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions? Not ready for the K.A. Kansas Association of Community College trustees. Trustee Ingram?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. There are two items of interest I want to let everyone know about. The first is the Phi Theta Kappa All-Kansas Academic Team Ceremony, which is our luncheon that was typically held in Topeka, will be held on Wednesday, March the 3rd of this year via Zoom. We are honoring three students from Johnson County Community College. They include Kristen Wright from Overland Park, who is majoring in Business Management and Marketing, Kat Hulley-Lichtig from Olathe, who's majoring in Liberal Arts and Sciences, and Jackie White from Lenexa, who's majoring in Biological and Medical Sciences. So we want to say congratulations to those students on this recognition. I also want to thank our JCC honors program staff who are in charge of our local arrangements here on campus. That includes Tara Kareem, Kareem, excuse me, Nellie Schuckman, and Ann Dauter. The next KACCt quarterly meeting will be held via Zoom on Saturday, March the 6th at 8:00 a.m. The Executive Committee's next Zoom meeting will be this Monday evening to finalize the agenda for that meeting. With the legislature in session, we'll obviously include some of those reports, updates from our Executive Director and that of KACCt lobbyists, and from our National ACCT delegate, Arlen Liker, who is from Colby Community College. Now, at this time, as a participant of the Zoom meeting, the national legislative session, I'll go ahead and refer to that. This was held on Monday, February the 8th through Wednesday morning, February the 10th. I'm happy to report that the summit was also viewed by trustee Lawson, President Bound, and myself. This was the first ever virtual event, as you can imagine, brought together more than 800 community college leaders and advocates, which was actually similar in number to the number who attended the event last year. ACCT President and CEO Noah Brown said, "With commitment and collective voices combined with the administration's support for community colleges, we now have the prospect of moving community colleges to the forefront of restoring our economy and addressing equity and opportunity that had been lost in the pandemic." An estimated $40 billion in additional higher ed funding is included in the next round of coronavirus relief that has been proposed by the new administration and currently is being deliberated by Congress. Now, excuse me, the NLS speakers addressed a wide variety of subjects throughout the summit, including the college promise programs, the investment in higher education and workforce development, and the role of the sector in the nation's recovery. The broader decline in the public trust for institutions of all kinds was focused on by the keynote speaker, Amy Walter, who is the National Editor of Cook Political Report, who encouraged community college leaders to be a part of the solution. And I quote her, she said, "You have to put the greater good of any institution ahead of your own interests. At this tipping point we're sitting in, we have a chance to be a part of that solution, regardless of where you sit or who you are." So with that, I will ask trustee Lawson if she would like to make any comments regarding the meeting. And then we'll refer to Dr. Bound before I conclude.
Thank you so much, trustee Ingram. That was an excellent report. I do have some updates. Last night, there was a phone call with Representative Bobby Scott, who's the Chairman of the Committee on Education and Labor, about the education portions of the American Recovery Act that impact education and the changes that will happen at the U.S. Department of Education. One of the things that I heard a lot was the commitment to renewed Pell Grants. And that is something that over and over again, we've heard with ACCT. They also want to make sure to help community colleges work to offer new opportunities that reflect, of course, the COVID economy. And Representative Scott did say that one in eight jobs right now that existed before COVID may never return, and we have to think about that and what that means to come. Of course, college promise, there really is no direction of this movement for free tuition, but canceling 50,000 in student debt is definitely the priority. I think both House and Senate looking for a number to make it happen through the executive order. And then, of course, the Perkins Career Tech in Education, the ACCT, had a very deep commitment for in-place jobs where people live or virtual jobs. So it was a phenomenal summit, and I'm really grateful that the college has provided us with the updated book too. So thank you so much.
Okay, Dr. Bound?
I think you both provided a great summary of it, and I'll let you take it from there.
Very good. Well, that does in fact conclude my report, so thank you very much.
Questions? I think that's probably the best legislative summit since last year when trustee Smith Everett and I attended in person, right before we were all shut down. It's amazing to think a year ago, we were actually doing things in large groups in Washington. But thank you both for attending, Dr. Bound for attending as well. Johnson County Community College Foundation report from trustee Snyder.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. There was not a formal foundation meeting since our last Board of Trustees meeting, but there have been several foundation committee meetings. On January 27th, the Board Development Committee met to review recommendations for new board members and directors, and the committee will now work over the next several months to develop a slate of new members and directors that will be voted on at the April Foundation meeting. The Investment Committee met on February 2nd for its quarterly meeting, in which the committee receives a report from the foundation's fund management firm. Coming up next week, next Thursday, February 25th, 4:30, the Foundation Members Social Meeting will occur. It will be held over Zoom and feature interactive question and answer session with Dick Carter, who we just saw, and Kate Allen. So that should be quite a treat for folks wanting to have an update on activities in Topeka. The Foundation Executive Committee will next meet on February, I'm sorry, excuse me, on Tuesday, March 23rd. As you all know, the foundation continues to look for opportunities to support our students and particularly underrepresented students, and two great partnerships came to fruition recently. The first is with Heart of America Patriot Foundation, which is a local nonprofit organization focused on serving area veterans. The foundation committed to contribute over $100,000 over the next five years specifically for student veterans here and dependents of disabled veterans attending Johnson County Community College. And this has been in the works for several years, and Kenneth Zumel and the foundation deserve a lot of credit for working on this to bring something that can benefit our students. And the foundation also recently expanded a collaboration that has been in place since 2017 with the Hispanic Development Fund of Greater Kansas City. This expanded partnership will now provide future students with up to $30,000 in scholarships funded by the Hispanic Development Fund, and those will now be matched by the Community College Foundation for students that enroll here. The expanded partnership now features a new scholarship specifically for students pursuing skilled trade certificates here at the college. And just to reiterate, the foundation is always proud to facilitate these important collaborations, and if anyone has input on others that we should be searching out, please contact Rob Wirick. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Snyder. Questions? Not, we're ready to move on into committee reports and recommendations. The first one is the Collegial Steering Meeting. The Collegial Steering held its meeting on this Tuesday, February 16th. All members were present, the President and Vice President of the Faculty Association, the Chair and Vice Chair of Ed Affairs, Dr. Bound, Vice President Weber, Vice President Cloud, and trustee Snyder, myself. We completed our list of topics we had been working on for several months, which were the kind of big ideas and implementable ideas, I guess, if you will. We talked and spent a great deal of time on the DEI culture, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and belonging, as Dr. Bound always mentions, and where we are in that and how it flows in with the strategic plan. And Dr. Bound updated everybody on the strategic planning timetable and process. We talked about interdisciplinary teaching, team teaching, and cross-listing of courses so that you can teach English at the same time you're teaching HVAC and, you know, customer service items, and how we can fulfill that while at the same time getting our students to their degree as quickly as they can and as cheaply as they can, and some of the barriers to that. We talked about finding ways, as trustee Snyder had suggested, finding more ways to get more students on campus in high school or otherwise so that they can learn more about the community college. We talked a little bit about, the Culinary Academy has had cooking competitions with, I think, I can't remember how many, Aaron said, there were total high schools, that there were maybe 40 last time they had it?
A bunch from all over the state.
From all over the state of Kansas and Missouri. And so that was a good thing. It was a productive discussion again, and we are now seeking additional topics. If there are things that board members think the Collegial Steering Committee might want to discuss, please share those with trustee Snyder and me. Next committee is the Audit Committee, and because I was not able to attend, I'm going to turn that over to trustee Snyder.
Thank you again, Ms. Chairman. The Audit Committee met February 4th via Zoom for perhaps the last time in that format. It was a very quick meeting, perhaps because Chair Musil wasn't there. Not certain of that. Might just spend the short agenda. Minutes of the meeting are in the Board Packet on Pages 1 and 2. Kind of three things to highlight. We received an update on the process that the Audit Group does to review trustee and cabinet-level travel and expense transactions, and there's no issues to report there. Dr. Sandra Warner provided an update on the Mission Continuity Task Force. Dr. Warner and other stakeholders have made tremendous progress with Mission Continuity, and she reminds us it's always continual. Finally, we received a brief update on usage of the Ethics Point Ethics Report Line. Overall, reports and complaints were down significantly in 2020, and most believe that's attributed to fewer people being here on campus, and that certainly makes sense. And that is what we covered. If I recall, it was about a 30-minute meeting, and that concludes my report.
I think maybe Professor Liker and I will get together on our own and have a really long meeting somewhere. Any questions for trustee Snyder on audit? If not, we'll move on to a heavy lifting committee this month, which was Human Resources. Trustee Smith Everett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Human Resources Committee did hold their meeting at 8:00 a.m. on Friday, February 5th, 2021, in Zoom webinar format. The information related to the Human Resources Committee meeting can be found on Page 4 through 11 of your Board Packet. And in an effort to abbreviate the 11 HR recommendations, I wanted to put forth two proposals and get consensus on what the board would prefer. So we have, of the 11 recommendations, 10 of the premiums are not changing. There's no change and no increase. One of them does have a very small increase. So we can either package it all together as one recommendation to approve all 11, or we can separate and do the first 10, which have had no change, and then address the one that did have change, which is the medical plan, as a separate item. And I will take...
Why don't we see, does anybody have questions about any of the proposals? And we'll talk about all 11, and then we can figure out if there's some disagreement or concern. Dr. Cook?
Ms. Chair, thank you. I'm assuming trustee Smith Everett, that in addition to no premium increase, all of the other provisions of the... the other provisions of those policies remain the same because they're continuous. Therefore, if a motion is in order, I would move that we adopt those 10.
Go ahead and make your motion, we'll second, and then we'll have other questions.
Make your motion.
Go ahead.
What's your motion?
I would move that we approve the 10 policy revisions as presented by the Human Resource Committee.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the 10 proposals that had no premium increase. Are there questions about any of those 10 specific? And we, I mean, these include our health benefits, vision benefits, disability insurance--
I can, I'll read off the list of what they are, just category-wise, and that will, again, I would refer you to Pages 4 through 11 of the Board Packet, which do go over the specifics of this. But these do include our dental plan, vision, life, short-term disability, investment consulting services, our employee assistance plan, flexible spending account, and health reimbursement account administration, our flex benefit funding, our employee benefit consultation services, and our Employer 402.3B Plan.
How come everybody else gets medical benefits?
Is, are there questions? Trustee--
It's really not a question, but just remind me, because I think as I went through them, they all expire next year.
That's correct.
Yes, yes.
Correct in 2022.
We joked at the meeting that Jerry Zimmerman is very conveniently--
Yes.
--retiring on the last year of these plans, and that whoever is in his place next year will have quite a feat, so--
Took the words out of my mouth.
Yes.
That's absolutely right. So I just wanted to bring that up, too. So, thank you.
That's amazing, yes.
It's a tribute to Jerry--
It is.
--and our faculty and staff who keep themselves healthy, that we could continue this without increases in those 10. So without further discussion, all those, oh, Trustee Lawson--
Just a comment, I just want to make sure, you know, I really appreciate the work that Zimmerman has done. It's been amazing. And so much of our companies that we keep going with on the human rights campaign for LGBT health insurance, to make sure that these health providers are also not discriminating against transgender employees, and I, they're 100% rating. So I just wanted to make note that that, I'm just so glad that this is, we're still doing this. So thank you so much.
So do you want me to read what would be the formal recommendation? I didn't know if that would help, or is that, there's a one--
Well, I think there's a--
Summing up enough, okay.
I think as long as we recognize that the motion is for items 1 through 10--
10.
Yes.
--on Pages 4 through 9 of the Packet, and everybody's clear on that, I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve those 10 items, down on Pages 4 through 9, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries 7-0. It was moved by Trustee Cook and seconded by Trustee Cross, in case I didn't say that. So we have the one with the small increase?
That's correct. So our Blue Cross and Blue Shield Plan did have a very slight, almost unprecedented increase. So the medical insurance plan does represent an approximately .26% increase in the premium provisions, which no one at the meeting could recall a time that it's been that small. But it is sort of relates to COVID, and just generally, the field has seen much less, so that we are not having to experience that increase. So that recommendation would be that the Human Resources Committee recommends that the Board of Trustees accept the college's administration's recommendation to authorize the president to renew the contract subject to review by college counsel for the provision of the employee group medical insurance with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City for a period beginning June 1st, 2021, through May 31st, 2022. The details can be found on Pages 9 and 10 of your Board Packet.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Trustee Smith-Everett, seconded by Trustee Lawson, to approve the medical insurance .26% premium increase for June 1, '21, through May 31, '22. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. That motion also carries 7-0.
Mr. Chairman, before I conclude my report, I did just want to speak to Jerry Zimmerman, who has been our benefits coordinator for better part of two decades. Somebody might need to correct me. I think he's been here almost two decades. That's correct. He did speak at our HR meeting that this is the best choice he ever made in his career, and that he wishes he had found us earlier, because it has been such a pleasure to work for the college and do this job on behalf of our employees. So I wanted to thank him for his service and his dedication, and I know how many employees have benefited immensely from his dedication to that job. So we thank him for his service.
Point well made. And Dr. Harden, I know you're listening out there as our new Vice President for Human Resources. Another challenge thrown in your direction.
Yes.
All right, we're ready for learning quality. Trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Learning Quality met on February 1st at 8:30 a.m. Those present included Trustee Jerry Cook, myself, and Trustee Angelina Lawson. The report is found on Pages 12 through 15 of the Board Packet. We had two really interesting sabbatical reports that morning. The first one was on math and sustainability from Caroline Goodman, who's a professor in mathematics. Professor Goodman was granted a sabbatical for the fall 2019 semester. The objective of her sabbatical was to develop a collection of activities connecting mathematics with sustainability issues. The results of her sabbatical produced over 30 sustainability and math activities with varying degrees of complexity and a list of useful websites. She catalogued resources developed and discovered during her research and made them available to faculty through the J C C C Math Collaboratory. And the activities and worksheets that were created are appropriate for more than seven different math courses, which is equivalent to more than 130 classes each semester. Professor Goodman expressed her gratitude to the board for her sabbatical experience, and we all agreed that the pride of our sustainability program and collaboration with mathematics is really exciting for our students. The second report was Strengths-Based Counseling Advising Approaches and Well-Being Coaching, and that was a sabbatical from Kristin Hearth, who is a counselor at J C C C. The objective of her sabbatical was to develop a strategy to use the Clifton Strengths Assessment as a tool for strengths-based counseling and advising of our students. Those strengths assessments are tools for identifying one's strengths and talents. This focus on strengths is believed to increase self-confidence, emotional and social wellness, and academic success among students. As a result of her project, Hearth became a Gallup-certified strengths coach, developed training sessions for counselors to learn strengths-based advising and counseling techniques, and a method for measuring and evaluating the impact of three strengths coaching sessions with pre- and post-surveys. These surveys measure hope, strengths awareness, and academic self-efficacy in a student. In addition, she visited colleagues at K-State to learn about how they are implementing strengths-based advising. Since returning from her sabbatical, she has trained counseling faculty, distributed informational literature, and has received referrals from the Career Development Center, academic departments, and other counselors to do strengths coaching with our students. She is considering starting a Strength Student Organization Club on campus to increase awareness. And again, she expressed her gratitude to the board for her experience. We had two affiliation agreements that Dr. Singh presented, two renewal agreements for Johnson County Med Act and American Medical Response. The sites provide clinical experience for program students, and both were moved forward. Chef Aaron Prater, who's the Chair of Ed Affairs Committee, presented several curriculum modifications, which can be found on Pages 13 and 14 of the Board Packet. Those include course renumberings, course deactivations, and new courses. The requested modifications can be seen subsequently in the consent agenda portion of the Board Packet. And to conclude the meeting, Dr. Bown announced that learning quality meetings, along with other subcommittee meetings, would be canceled and replaced with the committee of the whole format. This format will provide a singular communication source for relevant information previously presented at subcommittee meetings. And I guess the pilot of this format will be evaluated at six and 12 months. He announced that to us as well. But that, in fact, I would defer to Dr. Cook, whoever--
I have been coming. Thank you, did a good job.
Someone who wants some additional comments? Trustee Lawson?
Thank you so much, Trustee Ingram. That was great. I do really love the sabbaticals. I think that Professor Goodman, when she really talked about the application of math and using sustainability, we, I brought up the idea of, and the discussion of D E I, and how we can put D E I into relatable examples to understand at all levels of math. And I thought her template was so powerful that it can scale up or down, and I think that is so crucial, especially when we're looking at the need for remedial courses right now. The need to have it relate and make math important in somebody's life, and how they could see math in day-to-day interactions, I think, is so crucial, and she just nailed it. So just so proud of her. And of course, Kristin Hearth as well, her sabbatical and the strengths. I'm really looking forward to see how that grows and expands across our campus. So just two phenomenal professors.
Okay. A counselor, too, yeah. That concludes our report.
Thank you. Other questions for those three board members who attended that? If not, we are ready for the Management Committee report. Trustee Cook.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question for Gerb. I don't know if Gerb is online right now. Gerb, you mentioned that the mathematics, the score, the renumbering, I just want to make sure that I think that was done. I don't have our learning quality notes in front of me, but--
There are a number of math renumberings at the bottom of Page 14 to the top of Page 15.
Yeah. Do you remember, we were, you were mentioning that in the Board Packet, those numbers would be different, so I just want to make sure, is that reflective in here?
Yeah.
I'm sure it is.
It is.
Okay. That's it?
Trustee Lawson, I just looked at the Board Packet, and yes, they're correct. They were corrected.
Perfect. Thank you, Gerb.
There you go.
Thank you. Dr. Cook, Management Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Management Committee did meet at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, February 3rd via Zoom. Trustee Smith-Everett, Trustee Snyder, and a plethora of staff and faculty were in attendance. The information of the Management Committee can be found on Pages 17 through 23 of the Board Packet. Dr. Sandra Warner, Executive Director, gave a report on the Mission Continuity and Risk Management, as she did in some of the other committees that we've heard about tonight. A monthly budget update was given by Rachel Lear, Associate Vice President of Financial Services, regarding said budget development, as we're working on the 21-22 fiscal year. A report will be made during the annual budget workshop, which will be held during the Board meeting on April 15. Janelle Vogler, Associate Vice President of Business Services, presented the Single Source Purchase Report. She also gave the summary of awarded bids between $50,000 and $150,000, and a summary of those set actions can be found on Page 18. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President of Campus Services, gave the monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, as he normally does, and that report is on Page 21. We have one recommendation for you tonight. Ms. Vogler presented a bid for Midwest Trust Center Theater lighting upgrade. The detail of that bid can be found on Page 19 of your Board Packet. Basically, in the Midwest Trust Center, formerly the Carlson Center, lighting upgrades needed to be tended to. We haven't really updated that lighting for over 30 years, and so Yardley Hall and Polsky Theater will get lights and dimmer switches now that when we turn them on, the lights will actually come on, and when we turn them off, they'll go off when needed. And you'll see that that bid was to A-Z Theatrical Supply, was the low bid. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from A to Z Theatrical Supply for request for bid, RFB 21-032 Midwest Trust Center Theater Lighting Upgrade, in the amount of $182,100, and I'll make that motion.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Cook and--
Lawson.
--seconded by Trustee Lawson, who won rock, paper, scissors, to approve the low bid of $182,100. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
I would defer to Trustee Smith-Everett and Trustee Snyder for additional comments. Otherwise, that concludes our report.
I'll announce that bid was approved unanimously. Trustee Snyder, Smith-Everett?
I would just add that I believe the light switches were already working. It was that as they needed to be replaced, they were not replaceable anymore, the parts were not. So just to clarify, we did have working lights in there, and they will now be working with more updated switches.
Perfect. It's hard to believe that that center is as old as it is--
Yeah.
--and that kind of theater lighting and sound is changing dramatically. So we're now ready for the President's Recommendations for Actions. Treasurers' Report, Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Treasurers' Report can be found in the Packet at Page 24. The Board Packet includes the Treasurers' Report for the month ended December 31st, 2020. Some items of note include, at Page 1, is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. December was the sixth month of the college's 21-22 fiscal year. The college's general fund unencumbered cash balance was $59.9 million as of December 31st, 2020. State operating grant funding of $11.1 million, and an ad valorem property tax distribution of $59.9 million were received during January, will be included in next month's report. Expenditures in the primary operating funds, Mr. Chairman, are within the approved budgetary limits, and so it is therefore the recommendation of the college administration at the Board of Trustees, approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ended December 31st, 2020, subject to audit, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cross and seconded by Trustee Ingram to approve the Treasurers' Report for month ended December 31st, 2020, subject to audit. Questions? Trustee Lawson.
For the $59.9 million, this might be more for Dr. Bown. Was that an increase or decrease to what we expected of the property taxes?
And I'm going to defer to Rachel Lear, our CFO, if that's okay?
Yep.
Rachel, the question really is, the $59.9 million in ad valorem tax distribution that was received in January, how does that fit into what was expected--
Let me take-- --of the budgetary standard? Can I take a stab at it, just having done this for a while?
Sure. We let the Treasurers--
I absolutely defer to Rachel, and I often do. I just, some people think I don't pay attention, and I do. So I think it's higher than we expected.
It is. That is a fair statement, yeah.
I just wanted to comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that, do you want to hear from Rachel?
There was a concern that with COVID, loan delinquencies, you know, how would that impact the property tax? And it looks like--
It's a good question. I just, I sit here and I read stuff that our staff greatly prepares, and I just wouldn't read mine.
Rachel, is it fair to say that property tax revenues have not been affected for our purposes in this fiscal year due to COVID? Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that is correct. We had conservatively increased our allowance for uncollectible taxes, and we haven't yet seen that play out, at least through the collections that we received through January of 2021.
Okay.
Thank you. And I think I will ask you questions every meeting, so I can see your K-State paraphernalia on the shelf. That was wonderful. Thank you for--
That's my husband's. I can't take credit for that.
I think it's something definitely to watch as the property evaluations go up in the county. It could have an invert effect on us, an adverse, excuse me, an adverse effect on us. So as people get priced out of the area and turns over into a different economic bracket, are we going to have the same people in our seats and class? So are we going to experience an increase in out-of-state or at-a-district tuition?
Mr. Chairman, if I may--
Trustee Cross.
Just a point of clarification, if I may, Mr. Chairman, for the, for the Trustee Lawson. She's saying, perhaps in the same manner that the coasts have problems, that if we have housing costs that are too high, it could adversely affect our student body. Is that a question, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. I think we're always going to have an increase because the property evaluations of the homes are increasing dramatically. The sellers are getting everything they want at this point, so sometimes it's $40,000 over asking. It's insulting if it's only $15,000 over asking. So that brings in a different, once you sell, it's difficult to buy. So people buy out of the area, and I think that just could change who uses the community college.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may--
Yeah, Trustee Cross.
I'm just trying to observe Robert's rules and address the chair. I don't mean any disrespect to anybody.
No.
I think it's an excellent point. I thank the trustee for raising the issue.
Well, I think we will know more about property taxes on March 3rd, when Rachel and our folks sit down with the appraiser. And the demographic, the overall demographic of the county is, has been changing and will continue to change in many ways. of the county is, has been changing and will continue to change in many ways. And I'm confident that Dr. Bound is aware of that because of his wide-ranging interest in, in DEI and figuring out how we attract folks to the county. I also know that through United Community Service and others, there are significant efforts to find ways to try to create more affordable housing in the county. So, whether you call it affordable, or attainable, or workforce, so that we do allow opportunities for people to, who want to work in the county to live in the county.
Yeah.
Great, great goal, and not easy sometimes to reach.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. Dr. Bound, that's my report.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And I'm going to use a PowerPoint tonight, but before I do that, just a couple of quick things that have come up in, in either today or in tonight's meeting or recently. There was a question about supplemental pay delays. And, and I know that Dr. Harden, joining us, just recently became aware that there are some concerns. And so, she and Dr. McLeod are working very quickly to address these so that we get these addressed, so that employees are paid. So, secondly, a reminder that we have a retreat coming up on the 27th, and the focus will be DEI, as we've just been talking about, as well as, we'll go into executive session to discuss the upcoming contract negotiations. In, in front of you today, there are a couple of things that I set out for you. And so, well, actually, I didn't. Terry, Caitlin, and Shelby did. So, let's be just totally straight up with it. As trustee Lawson referenced, in front of you, you have the most recent second edition trusteeship publication coming out of ACCT. If you haven't read it, I've not read the second edition, but I've read the first edition, and, and it's, it's new and improved, and, and hope you'll find that to be beneficial as you serve the college and our community so well. In addition to that, I have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you and the data behind the PowerPoint. So, as I get into the presentation now, I want to start out just by expressing my appreciation to our team, certainly every day, but this has been quite a week. And so, as you may or may not be aware, we had a couple pipes freeze, one in the fieldhouse and one in the loading dock of the Nerman Museum Contemporary Art. And so, our team worked hard to control that, and, and will handle repairs as we move forward. Fortunately, there was, there was no significant damage or loss in the Nerman in particular. In addition to that, our faculty, staff, and students have managed through quite a week, as you have as well, with rolling power outages that affected not only our campus, but affect faculty as they teach, students as they learn, and staff as they serve our students as well, as well as our colleagues. And they, as stressful as it was, and I've heard a fair amount about it, they manage incredibly through that. In addition, I'd like to acknowledge that we have asked Alisa Waldman to serve as interim vice president for continuing education. And next month, we'll take special time to recognize Karen Martley as she prepares for retirement. But in that transition, we've asked Alisa to serve in that interim capacity with some additional assistance of Debbie Rulo and an absolutely talented team. So, all right, let's go. So, in my report tonight, just a quick reminder that we are, we'll move to the next slide, that the annual reports were distributed by mail, 1,000-plus were distributed by mail, as well as the annual report is available on our website. And, and for the listening audience, if you go to our website, jccc.edu, go to the about function and story, and you can find not only the 2020 report, but previous years as well. In addition, today, I want to talk about enrollment, now that we're past census date, and then take a look at student success metrics, a quick dab into strategic planning. And then, if everything goes as planned, something that I will be doing as we move forward is bringing a student for you to interact with. And so, if everything goes as planned, she's working tonight, and she's been, as long as there were no major problems, she's going to be allowed to join us later on in the meeting. So, let's talk enrollment. Enrollment for the spring semester is down 10%. You may recall, in the fall, we ended the semester at down just over 8%. We started, you know, as we headed into the break between semesters, we were 15% down. And I'll get into more of this in just a minute, but both in terms of headcount and credit hours, we are down 10%. There could be a little bit of uptick from that, but it's not likely to be a significant change. Our peers across the state and country, many are down in the 14% to 15% range. All right. Let's talk students' success metrics. What I'm going to report on today are metrics that relate to the goals that you set for me and for the college in, in the previous meeting. In the future, we're going to talk much more about strategy, but I'm going to set the stage today with metrics, and specifically as it relates to retention, enrollment, and course success rates. So, as we jump into this, the first, if we look at these three sets of bar charts, we're looking at the fall '17, so we're looking at fall-to-fall retention. So, these are students that would have been with us one fall and returned the following fall. We'll pull out of that number students who would have graduated during that time. But fall-to-fall retention, if we look at the three years overall, the '17 to '18 was about 54, between 54 and 55%. The following year, '18-'19 was 55%. And we dropped this past year from fall of '19 to fall of '20 to 51%. And I believe that community colleges across the country are experiencing a decline in fall-to-fall retention. One of the metrics that we look at related to this is related to race. And if you recall, the goal is to close a gap by half a percent for African-American students when you compare them to the total student body. The current gap in the 19-20 fall-to-fall retention is 3.4%. The gap between where the total group of students is and where African-American students, it's a 3.4% gap. Now, if you were to go in and start looking at the data behind this, or look at the charts here, you would see, you know, some, some differences percent-wise, maybe a significant jump or significant decline from year to year. There are certain student groups, demographics, that we need to pay attention to, because a significant jump may be due to a small number of students. So, I think particularly of American Indian, Alaska Native students, that group of students, or those that are self-identified as Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander. Those headcounts, from an enrollment standpoint, are quite small, less than 200 students relative to our total number of students that we serve annually. So, I want to be a little bit careful when you see some of the demographic moves. And also, where students have selected, did not, do not wish to report their race, there's, there's, can be significant numbers there. And as much as we encourage students to provide that information, it's a self-identification. So, and the, the solid lines across are where the total number are relative to the vertical bars are the demographic, the groups of students by race. If we move ahead, we will see retention looking at sex. And so, again, you, same thing, you can see male and female for '17-'18, '18-'19, and '19-'20. You'll see that when we get to the fall of '19 to fall '20, is we start to see a more noticeable gap between male and female student, fall-to-fall retention is actually 5.7%. The biggest gap in this area specifically, overall, is when we look at male students. And when you break it down more specifically, you'll see significant declines with African-American and Hispanic males. In addition, if we now look at fall-to-spring, so instead of looking at year-over-year, now we're looking at students that were with us in the fall of one semester to the following spring semester. If we look at fall '18 to spring '19, '19 to '20, and fall of '20 to spring of '21, and we go from about 67%, 68% in the '18-'19 fall-to-spring to 69%, down to just short of 67% this year. Again, the gap, the goal is to, to close the gap by 1%. The gap today between African-American students and overall, all students is 4.3%.
Can I ask you?
Yes.
When you say 69%, 65% of what? What do we...
So, if we look at the percent of students who would identify as African-American, Hispanic, it's the percent of students who are with us in the fall semester who came back the subsequent spring semester.
Meaning...
So, it's a percentage.
69% of the students who were with us in the fall stay with us in the spring?
That is correct.
69% of that original group?
Yes.
Are identified by whatever category?
Yes. And it would also factor out those students who may have completed, right? May be a mid-year complete.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. In addition, then, when we take a look at the same metric, fall-to-spring retention by sex, we see that the gap in 2021 is 2.8%. Again, when I look at fall-to-spring retention, we had a significant decline this year in Hispanic males, but also watching very closely African-American males and the overall retention decline from male students. And so, we're watching this, this set of numbers very, very, very carefully and closely. In addition, now let's take a look at enrollment. And I'm going to talk about enrollment, not term-by-term, but annualized enrollment, taking a look at the combination of summer, fall, and spring enrollment. And so, when you look at, at this chart, and, and you can't see it here in the room because of where the, the beautiful faces of wonderful people are in the column there on the right, you, you can't see. But if you look at the chart in front of you that we handed out, you'll see in the upper right-hand corner, while the scale isn't the same, you'll see white students and across the main chart, students by different race. The reason we chose to do that is because the populations are significantly different. If we were to include white students in the same bar chart, the, the vertical axis would be such that particularly when we look at smaller student populations like American Indian, whether we look at Hawaiian and other Pacific Islanders, and if we look at those student groups, and because the N is so small, it makes it really difficult to see. So, we took some liberty with that. And so, you can see, you know, just visually, you can pretty easily see what's happening from an enrollment standpoint by race. Particular note, from my perspective, African-American student declined by 9.6%. So, if, if we look at kind of big picture, what, what's the year looking like? Summer was flat, fall was down 8%, spring is down 10%. And so, when you look at this overall, it, it shows that we're down overall a little bit more than 7% if you look into the data. If we keep moving along, and then now take a look at enrollment by sex, you will see, again, declines, although not as significant among our female students as our male students. But, and in fact, there was some, some growth areas for female students, Latinas, and those with two or more races, self-identified, some slight growth there. On the male side, however, African-American students are down 16%. Hispanic students, down in this period, 15%. And again, where it gets more difficult to really identify our students that have chosen not to report, as well as non-resident aliens. To me, what's most concerning here is the male decline year-over-year, from last year to this year is 13%. And so, there are a number of things going on there. If we look at course success rates, how are students doing? Again, this is, we're going to look at fall semester. The goal is to, to, again, to, if we talk about equity gaps, and we specifically identified African-American students, closing that gap by half a percent. I will say this, the gap today for African-American students between African-American students and all students, the gap is currently 9.6%. Yes, sir?
How is success defined relative?
So, success is defined as students earn an A, B, C, or passing grade divided by students that receive A, B, C, D, and F, and W.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay?
W being withdrawn?
Withdrawn, yeah. Yep. So, the gaps between African-American, with African-American and Hispanic students compared to all students, has been high for several years. 9.6% decline and 6.4% decline respectively, which is a, a shift of 1% or 2% lower than the previous year. When, when, when I look at these metrics across the board, and then I look at the National Community College Benchmarking Project that we host, so this is, this is the, for me, the, you know, the big picture, hard news, when we think about ourselves as an institution. In most of our metrics, we fall below the 50th percentile. Okay? What does that mean? It means that half of the community colleges are outperforming us for the benefit of students. Again, the data is what the data is. But what that means from a strategic planning standpoint, what that means for the interim goals that you set for me, so we've got work to do. We've got real work to do. And, and we ought to feel good about the great institution this, that this is, but we also have a lot of work to do. And so, for the benefit of our students. I will say this, that, and this kind of goes, perhaps trustee Lawson to a question you asked a few, earlier in the meeting, was about the impact of online education and so forth. Course success rates are up this semester. So, if we look at fall, actually, if we look at, at the previous years, three, these three years, course success rates have stepped up each of these years. And so, to me, while there are gaps and so forth, students who persist are doing better than they were the previous year. Now, not like off the charts, boy, it's going to be a tough one to climb, but the reality is course success rates are up. All right. Last few slides. Again, when we look at course success by gender, you know, it, it is up, or by sex, if we, if we look at these, you'll see that male and female, that the female students have been out... have been outperforming the male students each and every year of the three years here. With African American students, female, course success rates are down a little bit, and African American male, course success rates are actually up just a little bit. So with that, that is the, the success metrics that I wanted to just bring to our attention. You know, the question is, as we move forward, then, what are we going to do about this? And that's so critical to the strategic planning process, is identifying that these are just, this is where we are, and we've got opportunity to improve from here. To me, it's not about, well, what weren't we doing in the past? It is all about, okay, here's where we are today, and how do we move this forward? And so the goals that you set for me, and as we move beyond that, the strategic planning goals that will be established as we move forward, these are the issues that we have to get at for the benefit of our students. All right, couple more things, and let me just kind of run you them through, speaking of strategic planning. So strategic planning, the work around mission, vision, and values has been completed. Appreciate your involvement in that, appreciate the feedback that you've provided. We'll be coming to you in June to adopt a plan. And there may be words in here, I know from conversations I've had with, with each of you, there may be a word here that you're like, nah, I wouldn't use that word. I might prefer this word instead of that word. But when you look at the work of, of the committee and the work of the college in this, if you look at the mission statement, there was 87% affirmation of the mission statement as it stands today. You know, you don't always do things because people like it, but it, from a faculty-staff standpoint, they like it, and it speaks to them in terms of where we're going as a college. If we look at the vision statement, it was a change, has a much stronger equity focus, and there was 84% support for that. If we look at the value statements that were prepared and then feedback and, and some work of the Strategic Planning Council, it's done a great job, along with Cabinet, the, each of these value statements had at least an 83% affirmation or support. Integrity is the only value that stayed from the previous strategic plan, and each of these, the committee has worked hard on based on the feedback from the college community. If we look at the, the last two is where there's some minor tweaks to. The teaching and learning value adds a reference to lifelong learning, and then also adds a reference to success in a global society. Again, these plans will be something that you take into consideration and will adopt as is or with modification as we continue to work our way through the year. The last value of community engagement adds the phrase respond to. So again, wanting to make sure that we are responsive to our community. As we continue to move through, just from a planning and timing standpoint, as we move forward, we're now in, in taking the slot analysis work that's been done. Thank you all. Had good participation from the board in providing additional feedback and, and input into the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats as a college. And we'll be taking that information, the Strategic Planning Council and Cabinet, and drafting goals. And we'll be coming back out between now and March and into April, coming back for feedback, and then from there, we'll move into strategies, will be multi-year approaches to accomplishing the goals that were set. And then we'll be asking you to consider the plan in June. Let's see. So that is strategic planning. So, and, and this is where I'm going to look to Vice President Gray. Do we have our student on the line? She is, and she's standing by. Awesome. Well, so this is the highlight of the meeting, I think, is when you get to interact with students. And so as we get her ready to, to come on and engage with you, it's my privilege tonight to introduce you to Cecilia Knight. She's currently working, she works at Riley Wood, and I don't think she's waiting on Chris tonight, but I bet she does quite often because apparently he's there a lot, Mr. Gray. She recently was recognized by the, the American Culinary Federation, the Greater Kansas City Chefs Association. She was named the 2020 JCCC Chef Apprentice of the Year and a recipient of the Hans Enderlin Award. She is fortunate, she gets to learn from one of our alums. Chef Ryan Williams is her supervising chef there and an alum of our program. You know, the Apprentice of the Year is granted to an apprentice based on nomination by her chef, based on GPA, based on the chef's last evaluation, practical points, logbook scores, and, and then an interview with a panel of folks from the Greater Kansas City Chefs Association. So it is my privilege to introduce to you one of our incredible students, Cecilia Knight.
Hello?
Hi there.
Really? Okay. Hello, very nice to meet you all. Cecilia Knight.
So tell us about yourself.
Well, I am the Chef Apprentice Award of the Year. I worked at Riley Wood. I'm actually here right now. I was able to slip off the line. I'm 20, this is my last year at Juco. I'm doing the chef apprenticeship here, and I'm also doing the Sustainable Agriculture Certificate. I do have a second job that I work at a one-day week, one full day, and that is a butchering job. I am the oldest of 12. I was homeschooled, I live in the country, got some animals. I have a lot of varied interests, and I'm really excited to meet you all. Thank you very much for having me.
Wow, it's a privilege to have you with us here tonight. Trustees, what would you like to ask Cecilia?
So Cecilia, let me start. I'm Jerry Cook. What do you want to do when you get big?
What do I want to do? Well, right now, my main focus is graduating and graduating school with honors, and I'm on track to do that. Really, I, I want to learn more about cooking, farming, and butchering. Those three are my passion and interest that I've always had since I was like 10, 11, and it's something that I've continued to learn and grow with. And so right now, that's my main goal. I will be graduating with my sous chef certification. So in a couple of years, I am going to be looking for a sous chef position, and then hopefully after that, an executive chef position. I would definitely love to have my own restaurant someday, my dream restaurant, which would take a lot of effort and work, but it could happen. I would love to be able to combine a farm and restaurant as one, where the farm's existence is solely for the restaurant, and the restaurant almost exclusively uses just the produce and whatever meat that can be had on the farm.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for, let me ask you something. Thank you so much for being here, and then I just wanted to know how, as a trustees here, can we support you? Is there something that you need us to know right now?
Well, I will say one thing, right now, you guys have already supported me quite a bit. One of the reasons why I chose Juco was because it was affordable, because I'm the oldest of 12, I've had to pay my own way through college, and this program specifically has allowed me to work and go to school at the same time, and I've been able to pay for college all on my own. So I would be able to graduate debt-free. Juco also has a lot of scholarship opportunities. I have received several scholarships that have helped me tremendously. So first off, I want to thank you guys, because you've already done a whole lot. You've already helped me so much, and other students like me who want to, who feel like it's very important to get a good education, but not to be sunk into a lot of debt with it. So that'd be my main thing, just please continue what you're doing. It's a, I've had amazing experience at Juco, and I'm really glad that I can continue to support Juco by recommending it to my friends, to my family members, and I have several siblings who I know are going to go to Juco for several different programs already. So my main thing would be just, please get the word out there that Juco is affordable and it has high-quality learning standards. The chef apprentice program in particular is known nationwide. Like, that's really cool, my local community college is known nationwide for their chef apprentice program. That's pretty amazing, if you think about it. So I would just say, try to tell everybody more about all the great programs we have and the opportunities that we have too.
Laura? Go ahead.
Trustee Smith Everett here. Tell me, I'll wait for a second so you can see me. Tell, tell us about something that you think, right now, if you were to walk away, have your degree, that you would say has stuck with you about your experience? Something, somebody taught you, or something you've learned, or something that you've gained as a result of being here at JCCC?
There are a lot of really good experiences and a lot of good learning experiences in particular that I've had at Juco. I'd say one of the things is just patience and that know, that you can ask questions. I'm, I'm a person who learns by asking questions and by doing and imitating others, and I've had the opportunity to ask, and every single professor in every class that I've had at Juco, I've been able to ask the questions when I really needed help, and they have walked me through the problem, and I've actually understood it. And that's helped me remember what I did wrong and remember how to fix it, especially in my cooking classes. Like, there was one class in particular when I first started where I think I burned the soup somehow. I, I, yeah, I like, I burned the soup somehow, and I was using the wrong pot, and the professor and I, the teacher and I would walk through it, and I figured out what I did wrong, and I've never made that mistake again. So I, I'd say, there hasn't, there hasn't been just one experience, because I've had so many that are also good, and it, it's mainly been the ability to ask questions and have them answered, and answered in a kind way, not, you know, a constant anyway. They've always talked with me as an adult through things. So yeah, that'd be my answer for that.
That's great. That, the chef that may have been your soup professor may have been my father, actually, Chef David Smith. So he, he, the soups, the soup week was always a topic of conversation at the dinner table, so.
Yes, yes. Soup's are, they're harder than anything.
Nancy?
No. We'd all like to talk to you a long time, I think, but I think the number one thing we need to know is, how long would it take DoorDash to get us the goat cheese and honey appetizer?
I'm not quite sure, not happy to ever really use that since I was in the country. It's not really a thing for me. But probably not as quick as you'd like.
Thank you for joining us.
I have these access to it right here.
Close out with her?
There's some nights where I have to have that as a little snack, because otherwise I need my car sometimes.
Well, Cecilia, you're the first student we asked to do this, and so.
Oh, my goodness, thank you.
Ah, we are just so happy to spend time with you tonight, and we spend a lot of time talking about policy and procedure, and, and talking about budget and, and outcomes and those sorts of things. To have a student here talk about your experience, again, just brings JCCC to life, and so thanks for joining us tonight. Please be sure to share your, thank your manager for letting you step away for a few minutes and have a conversation with him, with us, and please tell Chef Ryan how much we are proud that he's an alum and is training great folks like you. So thanks so much for being with us tonight.
Thank you so much for having me. This is a great pleasure and honor, and thank you all for all that you do. It's really helped me, and it's helped a lot of others like me. So I'll be a spokesperson for them, and thank you.
That concludes my report.
Well, I'm ready for a motion to adjourn, but we have a lot more stuff to do, because that was the highlight of the evening, I am fairly certain.
Can I, I just wanted to make a comment that I appreciate the report. A phrase that a mentor used to use with me is, when you have the right people in place, they don't change everything, they just shine a light in a different area, a different direction. And what I appreciate is that we're not flipping the school on its head and redoing things. All we're doing is just switching the spotlight to focus on some areas that we can grow, and in particular, on students that we want to celebrate and remind ourselves of why we're here. So I want to thank you for that. It's a great benefit of your leadership, and I think being able to have conversations about data like this, paired with being able to see it, you know, with students, is a reminder of how important this position, these jobs are. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready to move to old business. The items on old business are, I'm sorry, there's no new business. Old business is a recommendation on the committee of the whole pilot program, which is found on pages 36 through 38 of your, of your packet, and that is a continuation of our effort to move from a specific committee structure to a committee of the whole structure, which we talked about in November and January at our retreats, and again, last month at our meeting. The second, the second item there is a committee of policy suspension, which doesn't suspend the policies other than to say, this particular policy does not go through the individual committee identified in the policy. So we're not suspending the policies, we're saying they will go to the committee of the whole during this pilot program. And Dr. Bound and I have talked, there's more to this than we may have initially thought as to how you pare down agendas and make sure that you do things in the committee of the whole. On the sequence, you need to do that. So he has recommended, and I, I accept the recommendation, hope the board will, that we implement the committee of the whole in April and, instead of in March. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Dr. Bound would, or take a motion on the two items that are recommended in the board packet. The first one being the recommendation on page 36, that we carry out the committee of the whole pilot program plan and direct staff to carry out actions to transition the college from the current board committee structure to the committee of the whole for one calendar year beginning in April of 2021 through April of 2022. And actually, would that be April of '21 to March of '22 if we want a one-year program?
We could do that, yeah.
Okay, so we change, change that, if I could have a.
Friendly amendment.
To do that from April of '21 to April of, to March of '22, we would take that first item up. Is there such a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by trustee Snyder and seconded by trustee Smith Everett to move to the transition, transition to the committee of the whole pilot program for that 12-month period beginning April 2021. Discussion, Dr. Cook and then, and then trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had discussed having a review at the six-month mark. Does that need to be in the motion, or will that just automatically happen?
I think we will schedule that as part of the committee of the whole. Thank, good point.
And that was actually my question, but we, at some point, I have read two reviews, one at six months and one at 12 months.
Yes, right.
So.
Yeah, I, there's no, we would always have the option of continuing this.
Sure.
At the end of the 12 months. But so, I, I think this whole, because it's a pilot program, to me, that implies that we're going to be reviewing it all the way through and see how it works. If, if we want to put in specific, I think we ought to specifically direct Dr. Bound just to the board by consensus to build in whatever six months, I guess that'd be October. At the October committee of the whole, we'll kind of have that on the agenda, and then probably next February maybe before we end it in March, we have another, just if we can do that by consensus, I would take that. Trustee Snyder?
Sorry, we, I didn't mean to rush you, just whenever you're.
Oh.
Yeah, I think the recommendation looks good with that change to March 20, 2022, and then providing Dr. Bound the ability to schedule in that six months as needed, because we really don't know what this year's going to bring. So it may be earlier, it may be later, we don't know, but giving you that discretion to make that decision of when we need to do that review or something like that. Is that what you're looking?
Yeah, that, I think, I think everybody is, is on, is agree, in agreement with that. So, did you have comments, trustee Snyder?
I did. Yes, so the, the working agenda is also in our packet. I talked with Dr. Bound last week. Not listed in that are things like a sustainability update for the board and a foundation update. I, I would. I, I would add to that, we, probably a DEI update to the board, and I'm open to whether that occurs here, for trustees meeting or the committee of the whole, but he committed that those, those would continue to happen, we would have visibility, so I just wanted to mention that for, for the record.
And as I see this, these are the things that are mandatory parts of our agenda at the committee of the whole, and not, they don't exclude anything else. So I think.
I think that's a good way to look at it.
I think as, as we go along, I think trustees should, in their monthly meetings with Dr. Bowden, talk about what they want on the agenda. I know trustee Lawson and I have already had communications with trustee Bowden about an item for the April agenda, so I, I think it's a good point that these aren't exclusive, and there are other things that are important that will be in the committee of the whole.
And the best, I'm sorry.
No.
Trustee Lawson.
The best way to proceed with that, if you have something, just bring it directly to you and work out.
I think you bring it to me, or take, take it to Dr. Bowden, and he and I will discuss it. Either, either way, I'm not, I don't need to be the filter on everything.
That was my question for the working agenda. There were several things I know from our committee work that we had talked about rearranging at different times in the year, and I wanted to know who to send that to. So, done, thank you.
And as part of the, one thing to know is that trust, Dr. Bowden is working on how we do the sabbaticals, because everybody has agreed those are still important. We may not have time at the committee of the whole with all the agenda items that we have, if we're going to stick to our 90 minutes or two hours, but we want a way to continue the, the benefit of the sabbaticals, sabbatical reports.
And perhaps to that end, sabbatical committee met today, earlier this week, and are, are really working through finalization of some recommendations of exactly what are the logistics of it, but tying into existing structures that we have within the college, and then inviting you as trustees to participate in that as, as you can, with a deep desire of the faculty for you to attend.
All right. Further questions on that motion? Trustee Cross?
I don't know if that's a question, it's a comment. I've been lukewarm on this from the beginning, I think from the time our consultants questioned me about it. I'm, I'm going to ask that I vote present for some reasons that are both entertaining, but also because I'm not sure I'm in agreement with this, and I'm happy to spin this on my own in the coming year, but nor do I really want to oppose it. So I've talked to Dr. Bowden, I think I've talked to you, Mr. Chair, and I don't want to oppose it, but I'll just vote present.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. And voting present, trustee Cross. So that would be recorded as 6-0-1.
Can you clarify, just point of order, clarification, can you explain to the public what voting present would mean?
Yeah, I, I thought I did, Ms. Lawson, I thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I understand the reasons, I'm not sure I agree. Nor do I want to vote no and be a point of disagreement. I'll clarify for you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't meaning the reason, it was just the procedural term versus abstain or something, so that's why I just wanted to know, to make sure the public understands what voting in present is versus abstain.
I think you're quite literally, I'll defer to the chair.
I think it's been, I think it's been explained, I'm not even sure what the Roberts rules are on that. It's not an abstention because of an accusal or anything, it's a, it's an explanation of not fully in support, but not wanting to oppose the consensus of the board, and I, I accept that.
Okay, yeah, so do I, I just.
The other motion that we need is a recommendation that we suspend, approve the temporary suspension in the, in whole of committee's policy 111.03, 210.05, 215.05, 215.07, for one calendar year. Again, we'll say April 1, 2021 through March 31, 2022, as shown subsequently, and I would ask for that motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee Lawson and seconded by trustee Ingram?
Discussion?
Yes, discussion on that, certainly.
So for March, we will continue, because all of this won't start till April, we will just continue our normal board committee.
Correct.
Okay.
And to clarify, what that means for the month of March is, that is the management committee that will meet.
That's what I assumed.
So HR is not scheduled to meet, nor is audit.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of the recommendation, the motion on page 39? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Did you vote on that one, Lee, or do you want to go?
I confused you, I said aye.
Okay. That passes 7-0. Thank you very much. I, it is, it is a pilot program, so we'll figure out how it works and do our best to make it work with the ultimate goal in mind. And the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains numerous routine items that have been forwarded by staff pursuant to our policies, or through, through the committee structure that we have used, and are taken in one vote with one motion unless a trustee asks to pull something off. Every trustee has a right to take something off the consent agenda and have it considered separately. Is there anything that trustee would like to remove from the consent agenda tonight? If not, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Cook moves, trustee Lawson seconds to approve the consent agenda as published. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. That motion carries 7-0. I had alerted you earlier that we will, and Dr. Bowden mentioned it, we will go into executive session, and so I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiation, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for one hour, beginning at 7 o'clock, or 7:05?
7:05.
7:05 PM, ending at 8:05 PM. We will reconvene in this room at 8:05 PM, at which time the open session will resume for those in person and by Zoom video conference. For the rest, we would like to invite Dr. Bowden, Dr. McLeod, Dr. Weber, Dr. Harden, Kelsey Nazar, and Melody Rail to join this executive session. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Moved by trustee Ingram, seconded by trustee Cross. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries 7-0. We will convene in the Bennett, Bennett Room, excuse me, the Lidle Conference Room, thinking of the Bennett Lidle Law Firm, the Lidle Conference Room, and begin our executive session at 7:05. We will return here at 8:05 if you're waiting on the Zoom. We are back in open session after a one-hour executive session that went from 7:05 to 8:05 PM. There are no other items on the agenda, so I, no action was taken in the executive session. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Ingram and seconded by trustee Cook to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned. Thank you all.